All right, so this is a board study session. And I will seek an approval of the agenda which is to kind of go over the CEE survey results.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right. All you.
All right, so Denise is hooking us up with the Center for Educational Effectiveness. It doesn't look like they're on the line yet. And the plan is for Ronnie Rumsey from the Center for Educational Effectiveness to lead us through an understanding of how to read this data set. It's, the Center for Educational Effectiveness assists schools throughout the state with doing, collecting survey data that is perception data from, in our case, in our schools, we used all three options available to us, survey information from staff, students, and parents, to help us, you know, give us another piece of information about how we're doing our work. So it can't stand on its own, but it can inform, together with all the other information we can let, can collect our work, and help us decide where there might be some places we can show some improvement. You trying again?
No, I just wait my survey open to review.
Okay.
I'm going to write down the phone number, I think if I get the call.
Did you, you don't have to hit sign in now?
I'm already signed in.
Oh, you are?
The meeting will begin when it's ready.
Oh. So, yeah, so while we're waiting for her, when I touched base with her about what we would be doing today, and this is really an introductory meeting to give you an understanding of how to look at this data. This is something we're going to start to doing, doing every year. We used to, we have been collecting this data at Hawkins before when they were a school on the school improvement list, and so it was a requirement from the state. So when you have time and look through the link to the data set I sent you, or if you'd rather come in and get more paper copies, because we do have one set of hard copy as well, you can look through it that way. We have information from each building, but the information from Hawkins is more like what we'll see from other buildings in the coming years, because it is longitudinal data. It gives us not just what they feel this year, but a comparison to the last three years. So it is a little bit more helpful, and I think that's part of why we are committed to doing this, is this is kind of our baseline data now, and everything that we add on from here on out will help us gauge how we're doing and compare from year to year. And so eventually, it will be an even more effective tool than it is right now. What Ronnie's going to go over with you tonight is part of the staff data. That's a little bit easier to understand than some of the other ones. The parents and the student questions are slightly different, and we will go over those in more detail during another board meeting, because I think those are important, particularly the student, well, the parent perception data is important too, I don't mean to say it's not, but the student data is really helpful in helping us understand the climate of the school, whether kids feel safe, whether they feel challenged, and whether they feel respected and cared for, and all of those things that help them be in a safe and supportive learning environment. And so that's something that we'll look at in a little more detail later. Hopefully, we can find out why she's not there, but we're only two minutes late, so. Did she answer?
No, because I called in that number, so I think we maybe get her on the phone.
Okay.
If it's not working, I'll wait.
Denise brought in cookies, her way back.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
Pound or hash sign.
To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash.
Nothing. She's not answering. Do you have her phone number?
You start dancing, and then I'll start dancing.
It's probably on my phone, because she called in today. So, let's open the packet, and we'll leave it. Until we get ahold of her. So, the information in the, that the Center for Educational Effectiveness does, it's normed nationally and regionally, and particularly in the state of Washington, so they use hundreds of thousands of responses to kind of collect the data, and we can compare ourselves in some ways there. But it's based on the nine characteristics of high-performing schools, which, as you know, we've been talking about in North Mason for years and years and years. And also on the state eight, this one, because it's the teacher one, is also based on the state eight criteria for teaching and learning that we use for teacher evaluation. I didn't include the pages on the state eight in this packet, because this is 21 pages, just looking at the nine characteristics of high-performing schools, and that's the part that Ronnie's going to focus on if we get her on the phone. But the state eight criteria are the next 12 or 15 pages in this teacher packet, and what's really nice about that set of data points is, you know, in the state of Washington, there are three different sets of training materials that we use for teachers. It's either Danielson, which is what we use here, or Marzano, or the Cell 5D network from the University of Washington. So the questions in that section of the packet are based on those frameworks for teacher effectiveness, and then they're divided, the answers, even though our teachers are trained in Danielson, they're asked questions that would align with Cell 5D, or, yeah, Cell 5D and Marzano, so you can kind of see comparisons between those frameworks. And the frameworks emphasize different things, so it's very interesting to look at. And all of that, again, is included in the link that I sent you, or I can provide you paper copies of any of the pages you want to see. So, if we start and take a look, the first thing that they did was look at the demographics of our teachers, and that is on page two of the document, which is a nice colorful document. And demographics for teachers are divided by gender, what kind of position, or staff, what kind of position they have. So this includes certified teachers, certified support staff, classified support staff, and then they call out paraprofessionals and instructional aides separately, and also administrators can respond. It is also divided by level, elementary, middle school, high school, if you're in a K-12 program, or other, which would be our preschool teachers that probably responded to that one. And then departmentally, some people answered that they're in a department, particularly at the secondary level, you know, math, social studies, et cetera. And years of experience working in schools, and then also years of experience working in schools in North Mason. So all of those things are kind of played out for you on the bar graphs on the top of the page, and then comparatively so in the really bar graph with really skinny bars in the bottom of that page as well.
Is this primarily high school, the information that we have here?
No, this is all our staff that answered all the questions, so we, not everybody answered, 141 staff members answered, and that's about how many teachers we have, so it's about half of staff overall that answered, but this was only given to staff in our buildings. It wasn't given to transportation, food service, our office, so this is building-specific data.
You mentioned on the demographics that years of service in schools, and then years of service at North Mason?
Yes.
So is it that last?
The very last one, the purple and blue set of bars is years of service in North Mason, and the kind of orange and rest set is years of service in school overall.
So just one more question then, when it speaks to other staff in these next graphs that we're going to look at, that is not classified staff?
No, that is probably other, under departments, because not all departments were listed.
Okay, so certified staff would not be included in other staff? Other staff would be?
Let's wait till we get to the questions, I'll look at that when I get to that page. So, oh, yeah, no, it could be, it could be me as a teacher talking about my colleagues, regardless of what their job is, and those questions that say, "I do this," but.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the next thing that we look at is there are different ways that we look at how we measure our capacity to improve. Of course, we focus on the nine characteristics in the state eight teaching criteria. There are also things about increasing student performance, and how do we measure that, and how do we feel about that in the case of this survey? The context of the school that you're in, which could include the climate, and the community, relationships with community, family, et cetera, and whether we feel ready to make changes or not, either ourself, or we feel like the rest of our colleagues are ready to make change. So those are all things that this tries to measure, and at least give us people's attitudes on the day that they answered the questions, about the questions that we asked them. We got her?
She's going to resend the link, because she said it's working just fine for her.
All right. Okay. Well, I'll just keep talking, then she can review. So the first set of data that are actual questions that they respond, oh, I see what you're saying, all staff, so yeah, the top line is everybody that answered. The middle line, certified staff, is only teachers or administrators or other people with a state certificate. And then the bottom line is everybody else that answered. So it can kind of show you overall how we answered that question, and then if you divide it into those two groups, certified and non-certificated, how their answers might be alike or different.
Is this down here, like, when they say, "I'm welcome to new ideas," it seems to be, you know, pretty fair, but then when they say, "Do you think your colleagues are," it's really low, so they don't have a lot of faith in each other? Is that what I'm kind of seeing here?
That might be what you might interrelate from looking at it.
Or just their perspective about the.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, it seems like they, they are feeling good about it, and then, so.
So on this data set, and because I'm hoping Ronnie will get here, I'm just going to kind of tell you what's on the pages, and then maybe she'll be ready to talk about the rest, if not, we'll come back to it. But you'll notice a page first that disaggregates out the answers to a couple of questions, and this readiness for change, there's three areas, and it's divided by all staff, certified or other. And then the next page is the "I" versus "them" perspective, or "me" versus "they," so that's what you're asking. Yes, people were asked to say, for example, on the first one, "I'm willing to work at changing my school for the better," and they gave an answer about themselves, and then they were asked to consider whether their, "My colleagues are willing to work at changing this school for the better," and then they gave an answer about their perception of their colleagues' readiness to make change. And then on that page, where you see the set of graphs on the left, right-hand side of the page, that red box is showing you the gap between the "I" versus "they." So like, on the first box, there's a 16% difference between what our staff who answered the questions would say about themselves, as what they would say about their neighbors, and it's a negative difference. So they think, as Laura said, overall on that question, the people who responded felt that they are more ready to work on changing their school than the people that they work with.
Interesting.
Okay. So there's a set of pages for each, each of the nine characteristics, so there's readiness for change, then organizational trust, there's high levels of collaboration and communication, high, clear and shared focus, a high standards and expectations, effective leadership, supportive learning environment, parent and community involvement, and high-quality curriculum instruction assessment. So, district support, cultural responsiveness, each of those areas are addressed.
Okay, I'm going to bring us back to readiness for change.
Okay.
On page six, where it says, the very first one, "I am willing to be held accountable for student learning," and there is a thin red line which indicates that a person answered almost never true. So what is the response to that?
Part of what we're doing with this data is, we're sharing it with you tonight, that we have it, and that we're starting to look at it. Each of the buildings have had their data for as long as a month now, and they have been charged with sharing their data and having some problem-solving conversations with each of their sets of stakeholders. So most of them have shared their information, at least with their staff right now. Hawkins has already involved students in looking at their student data, but we're asking them to share it with each group, including their parent group. But what that might say in that question, and what you might ask as you're sitting down with your staff, is, okay, well, I noticed that, there's a line here that, at least somebody doesn't feel like they're willing for change, so let's talk about why that might be, what are, what might be the barriers in our building, so you're not going to go, this is anonymous data, and we don't want to damage the willingness of people to continue to participate in this process by trying to find out who it is and fix that. But we can engage in a problem-solving process and say, okay, somebody didn't feel like this is something worth doing, as a building, or as whatever, we need to sit down and talk about that. Why would that be, what, what would be the barrier to somebody being willing to change, and what do we need to do to change that? Because if we're going to change, everybody's got to get there.
I think that's concerning to me as well, because it is, is it a perspective of, I don't necessarily agree with the curriculum, I don't necessarily agree with our delivery, or how we're, you know, making sure we have quality improvement, or is it the fact of, you can't tell me what to do?
I think it might be an age difference, like, that person might be in elementary at a low level, and they work with a lot of, and my kid being a tough kid to work with, that they sometimes get a lot of those, those kids together in one classroom, and then you're working with kids that aren't willing to learn, and now they're being held accountable for their learning and getting counted down, because half their kids don't want to learn. So I think that that might be where a frustration would come in, but I would think, I'm just guessing, because it's anonymous, but I would guess that would be on a lower, lower age level than it would be like a high school level.
Well, and, you know, frankly, I don't think it really matters what level it is. What matters is, in my opinion, every teacher needs to be held accountable for student learning. That doesn't mean that they're at the top end of the test scores. That means that they started at point A, and at the end of the year, maybe they're only at point B, but there was progress. So if there are, if we have staff that isn't willing to be accountable for the students in their classroom being able to learn, and granted, there are many factors that conflict with those things, and we're working on some systems of support for that as well, but it's an interesting conversation to be had, I think, in each building, and I, we don't get to be privy to all of that, but I, that's, that's a very telling statement to me.
But one way you will see some results, and I know you have, is that this data is being required to be used by each of the buildings in the needs assessment that we're requiring of them for this year, before they write plans, school improvement plans, or whatever we want to call them, Title I, school-wide plans, before they write plan for what they're going to do for kids for improvement for next year, they have to do a complete needs assessment, and part of that has to be this perceptual data. And where there are red flags that arise in this data, we're expecting that when they come and present to the board, they will address those red flags in their plan, that they've recognized them, that they've done some problem solving, that they have a plan for how to change, whatever that piece is. Because we are all lifelong learners, and if there's a place where some of our adults have a barrier to being able to move forward and to learn, part of the job as a school system is to help figure out how to eliminate those barriers for our adults as well as our children, or we won't be able to move together forward.
I think it's also important to kind of define accountability. Are we talking about, you know, if a person is teaching appropriately, quick in the way it's meant to be, and they are, for all intents and purposes, following procedures, they're checking those boxes, but they're not getting the positive results? Well, the accountability is, you're doing your job, now the results, the results, we don't necessarily show that. Now is that because, is that the accountability for the results, or the accountability for doing their job? So I think it's more than just a result-based.
Well, and you're really talking about two different things, the process of teaching and the results.
And that's where a question like this is so broad, because.
And some people might. Yeah, and sometimes the questions hit a nerve, and it, the question itself might make you mad, so that's why they answer so many questions. To kind of try to narrow that down, but to get at things from a lot of different directions, so that when we're taking all this data overall and looking at what does this tell us about what we need to do, we're not, we're not, and this is, and this is only one piece, so how else are we finding out how staff feel? How else are we finding out how kids and parents feel? How else are we finding out how effective people are? So we have to pull all of that together to come up with a solution. But it's important to know that on the day that they took this, somebody felt that way.
So accountability can be so subjective.
It can be, and you could feel, as a teacher, reading that, I might think, wait a minute, am I going to be evaluated on that?
Especially if maybe the survey was just after.
Something.
And I think that happened with this survey, I think there's a question about communication with the district, and they got this survey right after we gave them some pretty strict directions at some of the buildings that people were a little frustrated by, and you can see that in their response to a question. And that's fair. We can figure out how to, well, even when we have to say tough stuff, we can work on how we present that.
Well, and I don't think we should ever administer a survey and not be happy with the results. You know, we're going to be happy with the fact that they filled the thing out.
That's right.
And then we use that information to either improve, or at the building level, or at the district level, but there needs to be, is she there?
And if any of us think we're perfect.
Well, no, that's the point, we're always trying to improve.
Except for you, yeah. Hi, Ronnie. Are you there?
We're muted.
Okay.
Hit unmute.
Is she there, Ronnie?
Hello?
Hi. Okay, Ronnie, so this is Dana, I kind of winged it for a few minutes. So we'll just jump into your presentation, okay?
So, I have a little trouble hearing you.
I'm as loud as I can be, okay. This is Dana. I tried to do my best to introduce the board to the packet that we copied, but we'll go ahead and just let you get started, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sure, so can everybody see my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Well, we'll speed through this, like, speed racing through this, because a lot of this is important, what I'm, my goal for tonight is really to kind of walk you through how to read the report, and then I know there was a few questions that your district has been working on parenting policy, perceptions around parents and students, and we'll be inching towards the school district. So I'll show you a couple of other places on your reports that you'll be able to find that information as well, and then I'm more than happy to come down and visit with you guys and go over this sometime in person, so that it might be a little more manageable for you.
Great, thanks, Ronnie.
Oh, wait, I can't do that, I'm just going to stop the meeting, that would be really bad, so. Sorry about that. Okay, so let's, what did I say? So, so really what our goal is to be is, is to really provide the board to you, and the board, and maybe the district mission, to educate, empower, inspire, and prepare our students. So part of what I did was I kind of went back through your goals for the districts and looked at those a little bit, to get a better sense of where you were headed. So, we're going to have to do that, I need to get comfortable. Okay, so perceptual data, the data that you have in front of you, looking at it, is very different than looking at achievement data. Achievement data is real static, I mean, it's, a student policy score within a couple of points of what they scored the day before, whereas with perceptual data, depending on what's going on with the person, it fluctuates from day to day, like, if they've just had a confrontation with another staff member, the scores might fluctuate a little bit. So what I try to really impress upon you is, the data that you're going to look at is just to drive more conversations. It's just a particular point in time how somebody was feeling, so it's kind of funny, and, and we want to make sure that we're not making any conclusions or assumptions to begin with, because we could head down the wrong path. It also can create an artificial cause and effect, so we could say, well, the parents aren't happy because the students are telling them this, when really we want to drive more conversations around the data. So I feel it's illusionism, and we, we, we as children being listened to do this quite a bit, you know, it's our, our desire to jump quickly on a solution before we fully understand the problem, and so that, with perceptual data, it's really important that you don't automatically jump to a solution, but really do some more digging. So, and at any time during, as I'm speaking, please jump in, ask questions, I want to make this interactive, and work your time, so please be sure and ask me any questions as we go along. So if you look at your reports, we're just going to jump right into the report, and this is the demographics page, which is on page two of the staff survey. There's not much that isn't really self-explanatory on this page, except for this graph at the bottom, like, a wallpaper. And, so if we, if we look at that, you know, a little bigger, I might show the user screen or how that's showing up, but what this graph shows us is, each different stripe on there is a different person responding, and if it's dark blue, that means they're pretty positive. If it's dark orange, it means they're pretty negative, or their responses have been more negative. And then if you look toward the end, will you see that the graph dropped off? That's how many, the percentage of questions that those respondents answered. So towards the end, you have a few people who scored less than, less than 30% of the questions, maybe probably about three, three staff members. The average amount of questions that people scored was 93, 93% of the questions, so that's a really a pretty good average. So, the way I call that out here is, if you have a low response rate towards the middle, some of your questions might be skewed a little bit, but yours are pretty solid, so I don't worry about that as much, I just want you to know that that's what that, that graph shows. Then if we jump right into page four of your, of the staff survey, these are really important pages, they don't look like they'd be as important, but as we work with staff, one of the things that we know is, how we feel about some of these fluffy items is really important, and it helps us to know how fast we're going to be able to change. So these are questions that talk about policies in school, trust, conflict resolution, I just can see, there's a lot of blue there, that's really pretty good, most people tend to look at the orange, and I was, I was watching and I just looked at the orange, but what I tend to look at. But what I tend to look at is the light blue in the middle with the sometimes true color, because those are the, that's a neutral. And those are the people that you're really going to want to go. Okay, I'm just going to talk to the certificated staff about why they would, thirty-two percent of them would not say one or the other, whether they're going to be just to address conflicts in the school. Okay, so the next page of here looks very much like the last one. For some reason, this page is, there we go. This is just one of the I versus they statements, so our I versus my colleagues statements that are on, begin on page five. And this is I'm willing to work at changing my school for the better versus my colleagues are willing to change to work at changing the school for the better. This would be an area where I would really say, you know, for the, the administration, you're going to want to dig into that forty-five percent or that. No, let me take this back. They really are ready to go on this graph. So the staff is ready to go, they believe everybody's willing to make a change, because they hardly any orange. So that's really a celebration, that your, your staff in your district is ready to make some changes and they're willing to do that. So celebrate. That's probably some of the highest I've seen on those two of the questions, so that's really good. This next page that you'll see is, I just added on the gap that you'll see. So on the right-hand side of that same, same page, you'll see that little orange thing, bar graphic. I'm not sure what your page says, mine says fifteen percent. What that shows is the gap in between a positive, how I rated myself and how I rated my colleagues. So if you take all the staff together, there was a fifteen percent gap between how staff felt they were willing to, to how they felt their colleagues were. This is really good. We tend, we kind of bring this up when elementary rates about twenty percent and high school rates about twenty-five percent. That's when you really need to address those issues. Because it's hard to move, move any bar unless we've got all of those I versus they responded to a more negative spot. So, any questions about that?
No, thank you.
Great. So have some great celebrations in there, so good for you guys. Okay, this is on page seven, and page seven talks about trust and organizational trust. And you've got some, some light blue areas that I wanted to get into, for example, openness. You know, how transparent are, are things that are being rolled out and things that the district? Because you've got some, like twenty-five percent of your staff could move either way, negative or positive on, on that one.
Okay.
It's just one to think about, because non-trust can really slow the process or completely stop it. So I don't see any really glaring ones that I would mention, okay, you really need to look at this. There's some with your other staff, and I'm not sure, the other staff is usually your classified staff, your support staff that are not certificated. So a lot of times this is, if you're going to a bargaining here with your PSE or something, we might see those numbers a little lower there. But really, I don't see anything that I would worry about there, so you can reset the launch or keep going.
Okay.
So as I said before, those light blue areas are really where you're going to want to focus. Not so much to get on it, because that's typically where we look. Human nature is to organize where the lower. You've got some great celebrations on here, you know, as far as your positive responses, and positive responses are the.
Whoops.
That's here. I didn't press anything. So your, your dark blue and your medium blue are what we consider positive. So we combine those together and call it positive. So for example, on collaboration and communication, which is the bottom one, your all staff is at fifty-seven percent positive, and you have fourteen percent who are negative, but you have almost thirty percent who, who are neutral. And if you look at that, that's kind of the trend all the way up with your staff. So the question I would have is, what was going on? A third of the staff would not choose always true, often true, seldom true, almost never, but are kind of sitting in that, that middle one. A good question I like to ask is, if you did answer sometimes true, what would you need to see or hear to change your answer to almost always true or often true? Because sometimes, there's a couple of questions in there. I'll give you an example. I was looking in Blaine School District a few weeks ago, and they had a pretty low, pretty neutral score on the building was orderly and maintained. And it was something that, me without having any context, I like, they took it something they need to look at. Well, if they're in the middle of a remodel, so despite asking the question, well, when the remodel is done, that score would, that would some context around that that would change. So that's why I always caution to be sure and ask more questions before you, before you make any decisions. So this, these line characteristics are actually what we have used in the past, and you've probably seen them with your middle schools, just saying, we've used the same report with them. It's laid out a little differently than it has been in the past, but I'll call out a couple of things that might be new to you. So that's page eight. If you want to get into the real specifics around what, what makes up curriculum, curriculum instruction and assessment, that begins on page eleven of that report, I mean, ten pages worth.
Hey, Ronnie?
You can find out what part.
That would be the middle school page.
Right, yes. What we have in our hands is a little bit different. So is, are we looking at one of the schools or all of the schools on the screenshot that you're giving us?
Okay, I think, I heard your question, so let me hear, I heard it correctly. Were you looking at all the schools or the staff?
Correct.
That I'm looking at?
Yeah, the, 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 what, the pages that we're looking at is different than what you have on your screen.
The pages you're looking at should be the same as the ones that I have on the screen.
Our numbers are a little bit different, and the order of the characteristics are different.
That's the page before, isn't it?
Okay.
Yes, it's page eight, page eight. For instance, on our page, third shared focus is the top one. And it's, the clear and shared focus is the third one down for you, and the numbers are not quite the same.
Okay. I can't look at that now, because I'm on my computer, like I couldn't be able to look. I'll check that page to be sure, and then I can email down and back and figure out what was going on.
Okay.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, if the numbers, you have the number that we gave you. I may have forgotten to change the page on there, so I insert a new one, but I'll go back and check to be sure, make sure our numbers match. So thanks for pointing that out.
Then just as a clarification, then, can we assume that the packet that we have in our hands, the hard copies are the correct numbers for North Mason School District?
Could you repeat that one more time?
Can we assume that the hard copy we have in our hand represents the correct numbers from what you've gathered together?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about the numbers on the screen as much. Got it.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I'm pretty, I think I know what happened on this page if our numbers don't match. So, so I'm pretty confident you have the right pages, and I'll double-check when we get off the phone just to be sure.
Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay. So you have a page nine that looks like this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this, I pointed out the next two pages, just because you can, it, it kind of helps you compare to high-performing and highly improving schools, and also our Nathan White database. So this is the mean scores, the average mean scores of all of your staff. So it took positive, negative, and neutral, and this is the average, the mean, compared to the means for high-improving and high-performing schools. In the past, you, you might remember it looks like this spider web?
Yes.
This is, yeah, this is, we just cut the spider web and made it out flat, so that you can have a better idea, because those numbers, everything started overlapping, and it was really hard to tell our district score in comparison. So, so if you look at the next page, you can see what we did was we actually pulled out, this is only positive, so this is the often true and almost always true. So if you look between the two pages, you'll see how the scores changed a little bit, or how your graph changes a little bit. There were a couple places, let me try to find it real quick, like culture, which is attached to the last one, is you have a lot more positive, you have a lot of negative that pull it down on the mean, compared to you, your school gives a positive responses. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And one more clarification, please. On your, on your screen, it does say for the, this one and the previous one you showed us, it says at the top, Belfair Elementary, Hawkins Middle School, and James Taylor High School. In our packet, it doesn't say that, and we have slightly different graph there. Can I assume that that includes North Mason High School into the data as well?
Yes, I think that she might have earlier data.
Got it. Thanks.
Yeah, the data should be the same. I pulled it from a different program. So when we put it into a PDF, it says you don't, you probably don't have those three at the top.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so let's go to the next page. It's, it's, yeah, that's the next one. This is a page, this is not part of the line characteristics, so I wanted to point this out, because this is cultural responsiveness, which is one a lot of people, a lot of districts are really working on, is, is race, race, ethnicity, culture, some initiatives around that. So I knew that you were looking at how, you know, your community was doing in school, so I wanted to pull out some things around this.
Page twenty.
Walking through a couple of things that you'll see on these pages at the same time. So, this is, should be page twenty of the packet that you have. I'm pretty sure the numbers will match on this one.
Yes, they do.
Perfect, okay. That makes me happy. So you, you can't, you can't see my pointer, my cursor, can you?
Yeah, we can't.
Okay, so I'll stop moving it around thinking that you can see it, so. On the left-hand side, there are the numbers, the first one's ninety-four percent, a hundred percent, all the way down to the ninety-four percent at the bottom. And then at the top, you see the percent answered. So what I tell you is, on the first question, ninety-four percent of the staff answered that, and they were pretty positive, because it's, it's a light blue. It's when we start getting down in the, I mean, if you look at the eighty-eight that starts from the bottom, you can see the color changes just a little bit.
Yes.
And you may, you may have some, and I think if I remember correctly, we'll give to you later on, that are actually orange, so they're in the fifteen percent positive range, so that, so that you know that, not fifteen percent positive, sixty percent of the people answered them, and then they were fairly negative. So that's something you're going to want to look at, okay, how, if more people had answered it, how would, how would that have played out? Well, how can we find a better read on that question? And I think a question you love, we don't look, that's not high on our priority list right now, so we're going to go to something else. So on the left, on the right-hand side, what it does is it breaks out the staff by certified and unclassified and gives you the end count. So on the first question, you know that a hundred and one certificated staff answered, and there were about forty percent positive, of the combined positive. So there was sixty percent that were either negative or neutral. So we took, we took those out, so you have positive they were. So if you look at the next one, this is a big celebration. I looked at that and like, wow, that's pretty awesome. A hundred and six under-certificated staff say that staff in schools are all you want to expect, all students. I don't always see that, but we unbelievably, if you can believe that. And then thirty percent of your classified or other staff said the same thing, and they were, they were about eighty-two percent positive, so that's another celebration for you. So that's what these reports will read, but I wanted to have you look at cultural responsiveness. If you look at the one almost in the middle, it has forty-two percent neutral.
Yes.
Ninety-two percent answered the question, and it's the curriculum question.
Yes.
And they talked about this, yeah, that's one that I would really look at, even though it's not the bottom, I would really look at that one to see, okay, what, what's the staff going to need to see that's going to reflect the diversity in our community? Do, do we need to include more textbooks with, you know, students of color? It could be, they just need to see more posters or more things like that, so those are just more questions to ask.
Thank you.
And then the last one on that page is going around this, around training. So, you know, what training do they need to be able to, to help the students in your community who are diverse?
Okay.
If you look at the next page, I pulled this one out, because the staff is the only one that answered this question. You won't find it from student parents. And it talked about district support for improvement. And one of the things I just wanted you to look at was where the certificated staff is in relationship to, they feel, they feel that the district encourages open parent and community involvement. They, their consistent vision for school improvement, that's pretty good. But we got them to the bottom, that's one that comes up, and I just wanted to be totally upfront with you. I see that those numbers don't surprise me. I see them almost always on, on our survey. So it would just be a question of what other communications do we need to have in place so that people feel like they're being communicated with?
Thank you, Ronnie. That's good information.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out. That's not unusual, so. And I think we're all always working on how to do that, so. And Dana told me you were, you wanted to, you really wanted to look at is parent and community involvement. So I pulled out, this is what the staff felt about parents and community involvement. So again, this is the curriculum question that we looked at already. This is all, they also talked about celebrating diversity. So what celebrations do you have going on in the district that would just celebrate the different cultures that these values have in the district? I would say those, you know, I'm looking at this just off the top, without any context behind it, I would say, those are places that you really want to have some, some conversations and find out what will help with that. It will help your staff, but it will also, you see it shows up in the parent piece as well. So we'll look at a couple of parent pieces in just a minute. You'll see what it raises out. This is, this is actually the parents' responses. Okay, so you don't have this page, so this, I don't, I'm not sure how clear to understand. You don't have this page. I pulled it out after I talked with Dana, out of the parent package. But one of their biggest thing on parent community involvement is a captive communication, is the school's down in the house, how do they can help their child with homework? The biggest area that you have the most opportunity would be the one up on that, and sharing the improvement goal with all parents. So how far we do that, so all parents know what our goals are. You know, you have twenty-five percent of the parents who don't say sometimes true, so they really aren't sure. So that one I would look at, and then the one above it, where you have seventy, seventy-seven percent of the parents answered, but they're kind of toward the gray.
Yeah.
Those, those are, they're just communication things. Um, those, those are, they're just communication things. So, how can we communicate our school-wide plan, you know, do we have it at night, do we have, what are some different ways to do that? Um, and then that, you can see the orange one right in the middle, so that has to do with activities that celebrate this culture within. So, you've got, you've got some, um, data that you can kind of triangulate, you know, yeah, every, all of our people are sending the same things, staff, students, and parents. So, that would be a place where you work with staff, you can move the students and the parents. So, that's why I tend to focus on staff, because really that's where, that's where you have the most bang for your budget, how can you help staff do some of this? Or, um, help them figure out what's culturally appropriate and that, so.
I think that's where I'm at.
Okay, you don't have this, so how much time? Oh, we're running out of time. Um, so, sorry, um, this is something I had them, I had our program that's putting together for me, so I did kind of show you, um, we have some common questions in the survey, and there's, most of them are on social emotional learning. And what I had to do was pull it out so you can see how staff and students interact with the same questions. So, for example, if you look at the first one, staff members enforce consistent behavior expectations and confidence in that classroom. The staff, they were fifty-six percent, and they were fairly negative.
Yes.
Um, and you can look at the students, they say they, they understand the behavior rules, seventy-seven percent. And parents, they understand the behavior rules, and their flight system is free, it's seventy percent. So, they're close, but the staff has a different view. So, that would be a question, you know, do we have some PBIS, please, you know, what are our behavior expectations? Are there some hidden expectations that the staff has that the parents don't know about? Because sometimes that comes into play here. Um, oh gosh, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, the one idea that really jumped out at me was student success is celebrated at their school.
Yeah.
If you look at the students, they think forty-nine percent of them say it is, but the rest are pretty negative. And then fifty-eight percent of the staff say that we have students who are celebrating student success. So, as I was working with another district on the same question, one of the things we typically asked the students, what would, what would that celebration look like? Because they had their awards assembly, they had their student of the month, they had all this, and the students wanted something totally different, so that's another play to ask questions. Um, and then if we look down, you've got some great staff and parent, uh, student and parent celebrations, they're in high expectations. The parents really feel that their students understand the expectations and the standards, and those kids feel that way too. So, they, they feel like they understand that. My question though is, if staff doesn't feel like they know, so again, there's that communication piece in there. Is there something hidden? A lot of times we as adults have hidden expectations that we don't communicate, maybe there's something in that. Um, so I just pulled this together, if this is something you would like, I'd be happy to send it to you so that you can see it. What I like to do with this is take and go, okay, here's our starting place.
Yes.
On the success and the social emotional piece, it, then I don't have to dig through all the data, I find it, we got it for you.
Yes, Ronnie, that would-
Then I'll send that to you so you have it.
Yes, that would be very valuable, because we're doing a lot of work on social emotional as we look toward next year. This would be very helpful.
Can we help this school PowerPoint?
Okay, perfect.
If we can see maybe at home?
I'll get it for me.
I, I'm not, if you can see this one, great, what this, and Dana, I will send this to you, so this will help you as well.
Thank you.
What this one is, is the top and bottom five survey items by response group. So, the staff's the top and bottom, so the top would be the blue, and we just hit the top five and the bottom.
Okay.
So, you can see, and there's a positive responses, okay?
Yeah.
So, for staff, the first one, we teach to reflect the diversity of our community, the community we serve was the lowest.
Okay.
Um, for students, the lowest one was, I see people writing books and materials in my classroom.
Okay.
So, it's kind of a little bit of a trend there. For the parents, it was, I'm informed about progress toward improvement over at school.
Okay. That's a very helpful one.
You know, yeah, the one that I would like, is my teachers expect me to do the best, because that was the high school student.
Cool.
That's great, they really feel like their teachers have the, have the best, their best interest. So, I will send this one to you as well, then you can kind of dig into it, I'm sure it's probably kind of small on your screen.
Yes, that would be great.
Go ahead, Dana.
No, that would be really great, thank you.
Okay, we'll do it. And this last one, um, it just, what I did was I had to pull the, any responses that had more than a third of the responses were neutral. I haven't seen this many hardly ever. So, you, you've got a lot of staff that either have questions or get my data, they aren't sure that this, the tool's gonna be used to evaluate them, they might go like, so they're gonna know less how I answer, there's a lot of different questions around, okay, well, how, why do you have so many neutral? Um, so, Dana, I will send this to you as well, it wasn't in your packet, we actually just finalized this, these, the last three reports in the last couple days, so.
Okay.
So, I will send that to you, it will give you an idea of where to dig in. This is staff, we only have a live staff.
Okay.
So, we don't do it, we have, we haven't found that we really need to do it by parent or student yet, um, and while we go through the back, so.
Okay, thank you, thanks Ronnie.
Um, the last, last couple things, I know I'm running out of time, um, your goals are laid out by the end of start indicator.
Yes.
The principal and the start, so if you look at the back, and you do not have this back report yet, because you will have it for the middle school, because they've been using it, we, for some reason, we didn't pick up on your school improvement goals, that you actually have some goals written within the start principal. So, I'm having those, having them prepared, those for you, and I will send them to you for the staff as well.
Okay.
Who have them for parents and students.
Okay.
There's a couple more reports coming, but they're all sorted by the principal. Um, there's just, one of the staff, the principal feels that we only have staff responses, the parents and the students aren't asked any questions in that. Um, and it looks exactly the same answer report that we just went over, so it'll be really easy for you to pick them up and go, oh, I know how to read it.
Okay, that's great.
And these are just PDFs that I told them I was worried, so you can see they're gonna look the same, um, and the same questions, just sort of according principles so that you'll be able to see them laid out that way, so you can measure your goals that way.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Okay, the rest is just, um, some more slides, so what questions do you have for me, how can I help support you? I'd be happy to come down and begin, um, begin with you at a work session or whatever, to look at this, I know we've got some time built in, and this was really fast.
Okay.
So.
It was, and-
Any questions or whatever.
Ronnie, perhaps we'll, we'll do that a little later. Um, the next step that we have is the buildings are all reporting to their stakeholders, and then they're going to give me some information back to share with the board about how those, how that reporting went, and how they're using this data to inform their next year planning. So, then that would, and then as we do our, our own district planning around some of the things you highlighted today, as well as other things we picked out, then I think we'll be ready to dig into specific sections more thoroughly with the board. So, thank you, and we will get back to you about coming out.
Sure, not a problem, and if your principals have any questions, Dana, they can always give you those.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh-huh, thank you, sorry, this technology didn't work so well.
Well, we eventually figured it out, and this was our, actually our first board meeting with a go-to-meeting meeting, so thank you.
Okay, well, great, well, nice, I have made all of you, and I was forward, you were doing good.
Okay, bye.
Okay, bye-bye.
Do you guys have any questions for me before we take a break and move on to the other meeting?
Just a real quick simple one, those last two things that she showed, which we don't have, and she was gonna send you, has a bunch of acronyms on the left.
When I send them to you, I'll tell you what those mean. Okay.
We're not obvious.
Yeah. Okay, do you wanna adjourn for?
Yeah.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll start with the approval of the agenda, can I have a?
I move we approve the agenda as written.
Okay, any discussion? Was it a favor, signify by saying aye?
Um, just in terms of discussion though, I'm sorry, I should've said something sooner. Down there, under superintendent evaluation, that should actually say executive session.
Oh, on the board.
Yeah, we will be having an executive session, um, at the end of the meeting, for purposes of superintendent evaluation.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, so we'll move on then. Uh, public comments, nobody has-
Uh, we need to vote.
Oh, yeah, what?
It's okay.
All the favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Uh, no one signed in to speak this evening, however, we'll open up if anyone would like to speak. Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to board member comments, and I'll start to my right.
Oh, um, I am back. I had a very serious surgery that turned out even worse than the doctors expected, so now I'm completely healthy and super happy, and I feel amazing, but I am still getting my, my rocks solid, my crystals balanced here. So, uh, I'm driving tonight, so watch out. But feeling good, and I think I'm gonna be here for all the future ones too, thank God.
Okay, um, yesterday I attended a student forum that our student board representative, Spencer Pruitt, organized for us, and it was very organized, and he had a good, good list of topics for the students to address, and it was good to be able to hear and interact with them, and just, there's some clarification that needed to be, be, um, delivered, and it was helpful for them as well as for us, and I really appreciate your efforts, Spencer, and we're going to continue doing this next year, it's been very productive. And tomorrow night, I'm going to the play, so anybody else that wants to go see Mary Poppins, I'll save you a seat, or two, or three, that's all I ask.
Can you, can you get in at the door, or is it a pre-buy on?
No, you can buy at the door.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, not this last weekend, but weekend before that, there was a Region Four Conference for legislative representatives in the beauties, beautiful city of Joyce. How many have been to Joyce? Well, only one? Just keep going west, and you'll get there eventually. It was a wonderful thing, we talked about, I thought, very topics that we have been talking, first, there are also, all, of course, was a discussion of the legislative year that's passed, where we stand, and what we're looking for in the future. There was also a discussion of the topic we've talked about before, and that is education and trauma. And there was some wonderful posters I just happened to have with me, this was my favorite, uh, would you hold that up? And then another one I thought was very good, was this one. Oh, he's so great.
He'd make you great, Dana.
This is awesome.
And Laura will hold up the other one. So, I was very impressed with both the topic, which I'd been prepared for by our deliberations, and I was also really impressed with the artwork of the students, I thought that elephant was especially good, and that one with the people, this one here, um, this really seemed to symbolize a lot of the spirit of it. So, I appreciate the, the opportunity to experience that. Next, uh, this coming weekend, tomorrow, to be precise, I'm going to the legislative assen, legislative committee meeting, which will be going from tomorrow at eleven to three o'clock on Saturday in Federal Way, and this is where we basically get the legislative agenda ready for voting for the, when we have the legislative assembly at the Wausau meeting.
Wow.
And I was with Laura the other day.
Yesterday at the student forum.
Thank you for clarifying that.
All right, I don't have very much to report, just been incredibly busy with my regular work, which is Girl Scouts, um, and also with scholarships. And I'm not done with the scholarships, we're doing more, some stuff even beyond what's gonna happen on Monday, but I expect to be there Monday, um, which I'm always there to watch the scholarship presentation for the kids that are getting stuff. And I'm, if more of you are coming, then Denise would have to write up.
And it's in the auditorium again, correct? Commons.
Commons.
Oh, and down here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't have anything really else to report at this point, just lots of scholarship work.
Um, I was not here last month, and so, um, superintendent, I attended a policy governance workshop down Olympia, end of April, I believe it was, um, which was really, really good. Some good information, just that opportunity to network with other school board members and administrators. Um, and there's some districts out there that are operating kind of under a very similar process to, to us, though I think it's perhaps a little bit more, or it's less encumbered, that maybe in the future we could have a discussion about. It's a process called a collaborative government, governance. So, maybe this summer, when our schedule's a little bit lighter, I'd like to put that on the agenda to discuss, and maybe just kick it around a little bit. One of the other things about that was, one of the goals for me in that meeting was about just trying to kind of get a really good idea of what we wanna do with, how we can make our work a little bit more meaningful, at least to me. And one of the things I took from that was the community linkage, and a lot of people actually had the same, it's like, what do we do with that? What, what's that? And through some, kind of some brainstorming, we had some really good discussion just about really engaging, um, kind of the external customers, if you will, you know, we, we have the Port of Allen, we have the fire districts, we have libraries, we have health districts, we have community groups, and we also have the other school districts. Uh, with that said, I was hoping maybe, not necessarily to, I don't need a vote on it, just kind of your support. What I like to do is reach out to the president of the Greatview School Board, and just maybe be able to meet up and open, um, maybe build a relationship, one that has been strained in the past. So, I like to go down that route, if, if you folks are supportive of that.
Well, it doesn't strain our travel budget too.
No, it doesn't, not, not, not terribly, so, um, yeah. Um, and then today, we had, uh, oh no, that was yesterday, we had an exit interview, um, for our state audit, and that was, um, some good stuff in there, you guys probably have your packets on it. My compliments to Ashley and her staff, as well as just the district in general, for a, a very clean audit. I had questions, um, and they provided answers, so it was, it was good stuff, so, that's all I have, so Spencer?
Um, at the high school, we're basically winding down for the year. Last week, we celebrated the teachers with the teacher appreciation breakfast, and we had our last student roundtable yesterday, and one of the big events happening is our theater, um, our drama class is putting on the theater performance. They have a play tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday in them, and that is really good, I heard, so, and that's about it.
So, moving on to our consent agenda, and there were, um, a few items in there, I actually wanted some clarification on, um, so I'll, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda item, and then maybe have some discussion.
I move that, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Awesome, and so, discussion.
Um, I would like to, um, pull out an item.
Okay.
Or ask to pull out an item, because we have to agree to that. Um, we do have a motion on the floor, but this would be a legal second motion, so I'd like to move, that we move item, or pull item J out of the consent agenda for the purpose of, so that I don't have to recuse myself from the whole of consent agenda, because I will recuse myself from-
because I will recuse myself from item J. That's being sixth grade outdoor camp, which is happening at the Girl Scout camp that I work at.
Oh, so you just wanna vote on that separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Which I, and I won't be voting either. If I pull that out, then I can.
So you're gonna abstain from that vote, okay, so.
Yeah, we can actually vote on this with you abstaining from item J.
He doesn't wanna abstain from the whole consent agenda.
Right. But he specifically abstains. Okay, let's pull it out, let's do that.
Okay, motion to pull out item J from the consent agenda and vote on it separately.
So moved.
Moved, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed? Alright, so item J will be pulled and voted on its own. Um, a couple of questions I had was regarding the Holly Ridge contract, which is, um, two under G. I, I don't, what, what is the school district's responsibility with, it sounds like infant to three-year-old?
Yeah, birth to three services are provided for us by Holly Ridge. So our contract pays for their services, they do the, they follow up and do, we do some child find, but they do child find to find kids with special education needs in our school district that are in that age group, that then they serve, and they serve them in, often it's in home visits, but also sometimes in program at Holly Ridge. So, is that answered your question?
Yeah, I, I, to be honest, I didn't realize we had a responsibility in that age group.
Um, yeah, that is, that, that may be changing, is in the next budget year, but right now we do.
Okay.
Yes, you may.
That contract's fully funded by the state. So the money that we get pass, we get through, certain pass-through revenue from the state.
Okay.
That literally 100% fully covers our Holly Ridge contract.
Okay.
So without that contract, we don't get the money though. So we want to be providing the services to those children.
Okay, thank you. Another one was, and I'm trying to find it in here, and I don't think we pulled it, but I'm not seeing it, was the policy forty-two hundred.
There it is, safe and orderly learning environment.
Okay, so one, a line in that policy contradicts another policy.
Which line?
So, um, it says, starting from line six, "Certificated staff will be available for consultation with students and community members during regular building hours, which for teachers shall be seven and a half hours, including a thirty-minute duty-free lunch period, consistent with policy fifty-two thirty-one length of workday." Under fifty-two thirty-one P.
That's the procedure.
Oh, that's procedure, okay. So it doesn't signify, or the, um, it talks about what the length of a workday is, but under that procedure, it says that, um, their thirty-minute, is it duty-free? Or, I'm sorry, uh, should not perform, shall not perform duties during meal periods.
Which would be a duty-free lunch.
Right, but this is including a thirty-minute. Building hours, seven and a half hours, including a thirty-minute. I read that as their thirty-minute duty-free is still.
No, that's the description of their workday, the seven and a half hours.
I understand, but if I'm reading the entire paragraph as one, it makes it sound like "certificated staff will be available for consultation with, with, with students and community members during regular building hours, which shall be seven and a half hours, including a thirty-minute."
So, would it make more sense to have it say excluding a thirty-minute? The thirty-minute duty-free lunch. Would you wanna make a motion to? I'll make a motion to, to revise this policy to, to say excluding a thirty-minute duty-free lunch.
Denise, can you make that change before they vote? Thank you.
Thank you. So we got a motion, any discussion on it? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Alright, I'm not done.
Good kid.
And it was a, I think it's just gonna be a mathematical correction, but I want to make sure it is. Under the budget financial report, there's also under.
What number?
I'm, I'm getting there, give me a second.
Aye? No.
No, negative, sorry, it's not under the consent agenda, we'll hit it later. So.
I have one I would like to call out, among all those policies. Now, I won't be able to find the one I'm talking about. Where's the one we just revised after our meeting, Denise? You know? Fifty-fifty. Yeah, I wanted to specifically talk about fifty-fifty, because there were a lot of requirements for change in here as a result of legislation. But I also wanna point out that in our monthly meeting with NMEA leadership, they pointed out a place where we could correct some language as well, that, so it would be more clear for everybody to understand, and, and maybe feel better for people, so we did that. And where that is, is in section A. We, we have had language in the past, and which says, on, starting on line nineteen, "Failure to return this contract within ten days of the above date of issuance, et cetera, et cetera." We have amended that to say "school days" at the request of our NMEA leadership. So that's part of the changes we included this time, I just wanted to call that out for you guys.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything else?
I do.
Yep?
This would be a policy also, the very first one, which is two oh two-three digital citizenship and media literacy. It's not a really technical question, except in a sense it is. As this one went, as I looked at it, it was removing a policy about.
Lesson plans.
Lesson plans. And then coming into and creating a policy about digital citizenship. What's that all about?
So.
I mean, it's like, they're almost like two different things, but it's using.
Well, they are two different things, and what happened was WASDA reviews policies and determines what they still need to require of us, and what is no longer required as legislation changes. And they made a bunch of changes around about two thousand and eleven, and we didn't look at all those changes in two thousand and eleven. And right now Denise is cleaning up everything that's that old to make sure that we don't have extra policies that we don't need. So, the policy on lesson plans was eliminated around two thousand and eleven at the state level, but we still had one. And the policy for digital citizenship is one that we need to have now. So, we have other way, other policies that address, you know, professionalism and, and our contract and all of those things do, so we agreed with WASDA that we no longer need a policy describing lesson plans, and they're using the number that they used to use for lesson plans for digital.
My real question was about the number.
Yeah, it was all about the number.
I got the rest of it otherwise.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Alright. Anything else for the consent agenda? Alright, we do have a motion, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda signify by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed? Alright, consent, consent agenda passes, and we'll now vote on the sixth grade outdoor camp, which was item J.
So I will formally recuse myself from this vote and discussion now.
Okay, so, um, make a, a motion to, I guess, accept, or to approve the sixth grade camp over at Camp Lyle McLeod.
So moved.
Moved, any discussion?
Yeah, but, was it, wasn't it the case that we had just one school that was going to camp, and now it looks like all of them are?
Yes, um, actually Jill Warren's here from Hawkins, and she might wanna talk to you just for a minute or two about sixth grade camp.
So, the decision a couple of years ago became a conversation that one elementary was getting to do camp. It was creating a lot of burden on the parents of that school for their PTSA, where the other school, the parents weren't quite willing to raise the fifteen thousand dollars. Were able to do it, so mainly able. The community can only support so much fundraising. And so, the other issue we're having is, two elementaries are coming to school, and it seems like it's taking them until about December to really get into the groove of middle school and get comfortable and start showing that progress. The first three months are kind of just training them. So the idea became to have a sixth grade camp at the beginning of the year, to meld the two elementaries together, to teach them study skills, success skills, also work with social, emotional. Um, middle school's a new era for them, there's a lot of new experiences with peers and conflicts that they're not used to having. Um, they have multiple teachers versus just one. So the idea was the camp would work both on those skills to get them comfortable and showing success faster. And then the other day, our web leaders, our upperclassmen are gonna come down and do kind of just the fun welcome to Hawkins kind of activity. So we're doing it, starting at the Tuesday night before school starts. They'll go out that night, spend Wednesday and Thursday all day there, and then they'll come back Friday about noon and have a short orientation at the school, so that when they come back Monday, they're ready to go and jump into the academic world, hopefully.
So that's just an orientation kind of period when they come back?
Yeah, just that half day.
Because it said they're, like, return to classes, and I was gonna ask how effective would that be?
Fifteen minutes just to see where they are, and just kind, yeah, because they'll be with their sixth grade teachers.
Alright.
So they'll get to know their teachers while they're at camp.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on sixth grade camp? I, I think this is a great, being a parent of Bell Fair, we, it, it's a lot of work to raise that money, and it was, and it was always kind of one of those things, I wish we could do it for both, why don't we do it for both, and it was never, ever answered for me, but now we have an answer, so. Just different way of doing it, so. All those in favor of, of accepting that, the sixth grade camp and approving that, signify by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed? And one abstained? So that also passes. I apologize, I'm working through paper and.
Okay, um.
What are we on now, the superintendent update?
Yeah, so Capital Projects. This is a case of good news and bad news. We'll talk about the good news first. The, things are moving ahead in our completion of our new, new-to program building at Theller. Painting and carpeting will be happening soon, so we're almost ready for our teachers to move their stuff in for next year. So that's very exciting. We are partnering with ESD one thirteen, so we, we are giving them a beautiful shell of a building when it's all painted and carpeted and all the finishes, and new blinds and window films, and finishes are new. They're gonna do a couple of additions over the summer, but our preschool programs will finally be able to begin the year in their new home in the fall, so we're really excited. They're also doing some additional playground work. They already put in a beautiful little kid climbing thing out there, and there will be some fencing and, and some other improvements to the play area that community members can use when school's not in session. Another part of Theller, as the preschool moves down there, the parking lot that is directly next to the building, in front of the building, will become a preschool parking lot, and, but thanks to the generosity of Dr. LePaire, who happens to be in the building, we do have permission to use the parking lot by his old office and, and his space there, when there are overflow events at Bell Fair that won't be able to use the preschool parking lot for things like donuts with dad or muffins with mom and those things. So, that's really kind, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes. Let's see, what else? Are, we are on, in the process of getting bids to do the little bit of remodeling work that we need to do in the community gymnasium building, in the old music room, to create the home for our new, new student and staff health center that will be opening in the fall in partnership with Peninsula Community Health. So we're very, very excited about that. That will give us access for our kids and our staff, if they so choose, to take advantage of some medical services, as well as particularly, in light of the needs we are identifying with kids, mental health services. And it, for those of you who aren't aware, our partnership with Peninsula Community Health will also allow us to work with them to provide some Well Child Day visit days right in our middle, elementary schools as well, because they're not on this campus. They will provide opportunities for sports physicals for our students, so we eliminate that problem that happens every year for kids who might not be able to participate because of the expense of sports physical, or the fact that there's only so many doctors in the region who do sports physicals, and way too many schools who need them all at the same time. So, um, we're really excited about that partnership, and that, if all goes as planned, we'll be ready, if, if not, right when school starts, early in the fall. So we're very excited about that. In the stadium, our concession stand locker room bathroom building is looking gorgeous. We would encourage you to go check it out, it, it will definitely be ready. The new scoreboard has been identified and ordered, and I think it's gonna be awfully flashy scoreboard. We have a video on there and everything else, so we'll be able to even do the instant replay if we need to. So, um, that's pretty exciting. Uh, the na, the negative or, or the slowdown is, of course, uh, or not of course, but you can guess, on our roof, the, that we approved last month, as we came and brought the guy in, and he looked in more detail. In order to do what he thought he was going to do, he would've put eight pillars across the front of, you know, holding up the roof, and that's, we were planning on four pillars, and eight pillars would block a lot of stuff. So there's a little redesigning that needs to happen, so the roof may not, will probably not be done in time for fall, but everything else will be. So, that's where we are. Pluses and minuses. Teaching and learning, a little bit later, I think I am going to do the MTSS presentation, so I will hold off on that, and that's the focus of what I wanna talk about tonight. And it's actually just a teaser for next month, when Beth Burke comes to talk to you about all the work that we're doing. So, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the budget, budget report.
Okay, so some information for April. I do wanna start off by saying, the, the hope is the information that you're gonna see, or the style of the format of the information you're gonna see next month at the meeting for the month of May is going to change. I have a, a new software that allows me to really dig into the data and displays it in a, in a manner that I think you guys are gonna be happy with. So expect to see some changes as far as the presentation of the material come next month. But for April, it looks the same as it has for years. Revenues and expenditures were both higher than budgeted for that month. This is, uh, the expenditures being higher is mainly due to our Theller project, and the costs have now finally started coming in over the last two months in order to pay for those, for that project. And then the increased revenues was due to our increased enrollment for this school year. For the, the general fund and where we are at year-to-date, we are currently have higher expenditures by just about a half million than what was originally budgeted. This is due to the, the same trend that we've been seeing all year. It's the multiple facility projects that we have going on right now, the increased special education costs, and then the increased payroll and benefits due to some negotiated rates that we had earlier in the year. Our revenues year-to-date, they're trending higher as well, and that is due to the increased enrollment for the school district. The general fund fund balance for the month of April did increase fairly significantly. We're at about just under three point five million. April's the month that we get our property tax payments, a big portion of it. So that's why we're seeing that increase. We are trending just above where we were last year, and then significantly over the three-year trend. The, the fund increases, and then we do some transfers to pay for some debt service payments, which you guys had seen in that consent agenda, to do those transfers. So that's what we're seeing there.
One, one correction on that.
Uh huh.
The expenditure year-to-date, the actual versus the budget, it's five thirty-three, not five thirteen.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, um, we have, so the budget status. Okay, so we have, so the budget status for the rest of our funds. Capital projects were sitting at about 3.4 million currently. For the most part, this is the funds that are left for the stadium project. So as you just heard Dana say, with the delay of the roof for the bleacher area, we're going to see that fund balance stay right around probably 3 million for a little while until we can get that project rolling. The debt service fund increased. Again, this was due to property tax collections that are used to pay for our debt. So the bond or loan that we took out for the stadium is being paid from that debt service fund. So we have about a million dollar payment that's going to be coming out on June 1st. ASB, we're sitting right at about 343,000. Our transportation vehicle fund's at 53,000. I just asked one of our accountants to follow up on the payment for that engine for the bus, because we should be seeing that come through, which will cut their fund balance about in half until August, when we receive our depreciation payment for our buses. Enrollment, we're trending right about where we have been for months now. So we're right about 2,192. That is significantly over where it was budgeted last year. And it stayed fairly significant, or the same, if you look across the trend, right there under 2,200 for quite a few months. So we should here at the next meeting have our average enrollment for the month once we conclude on June. That's what I have. Do you guys have any questions, comments?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, is there anything else to talk about with budget planning, or are you going to just do your report in June?
Yeah.
Okay. So as Ashley said, she's been working on some software that will help with the budget planning for next year. She anticipates presenting draft budget to the board in June, which is a little bit earlier than we usually get to that. It will be draft, because we will have some guestimates about where we are and some of our salaries and benefits for next year, but depending on where we are with each of our bargaining groups, we won't have exact numbers until we complete that work.
Okay.
So we're looking forward to that. And like she said, she has the new software helps her be really exact and do some long-range planning that will be very helpful for us as well as we move forward. Ryan wasn't able to be with us, one of our student board members. This was, this or next month would be his last meeting, but he has a new job, and he's working tonight. But we do have recognition for our board members and for our student board members, and so I will find Ryan at school in case it's difficult for him to get here. But I did want to show everybody, we've changed the thank you gift we're giving to our student board members, and it's really, really cool. So since he's not here for me to give it to and show you, I just want to show anywhere. So it's a really cool little bowl that says, "Thank you for your service to the Board of Education," with our logo and the years and his name. So I think that's very cool.
It'll hold a lot of P and M's.
It will hold a lot of M and M's.
You can have a goldfish.
That's for Ryan.
Oh, this is Ryan's?
Yes. Spencer's staying with us for another year, so he's going to have to wait for his gift.
Does anybody want to touch this before it's all good?
Thank you. So that's very exciting. We're really thankful to Ryan. And next year, Morgan Mahalich is going to join Spencer as a student board member. All right, you want to pull up that little short PowerPoint? It's very short. And there is, you do have a handout from Beth. This handout is actually going to be shared by the principals in their buildings tomorrow with all their staff. It lets staff know about some presentations that will be happening at each of our buildings on Monday during collaboration time. We have been engaged at the principal and district office and counselor level throughout the year, taking a look at the very serious problems and concerns that we have around student behavior, around social, emotional learning, and the incredible impact those are having on classroom experience right now for kids and teachers. And we have a plan, or we're working on a plan, so we're working on a new braiding of our initiatives to create an effective set of systems, multi-tiered systems of support, to support our kids and adults in our buildings. And Beth will be bringing a task force report to the board at its June meeting in 2018, just a few weeks away. Okay, Denise, next slide. So the focus of the work, as we're looking at all of the concerns, all of the initiatives, all of the data that we collect, we're starting to draft some language that we'll want to talk about with the board in more detail. But we want to start thinking about what we're doing in our schools in North Mason in terms of the whole child, the whole school, and the whole community. So this multi-tiered system of support initiative is going to help us braid the needs of all of those and how we build successful students and young people who can be whole and completing themselves, successful in their school, and later successful in their community, and bring the school and the community together in that work. So we will be focusing on three principals that we have been focusing on, but we've really narrowed down. The first thing we did with that larger group, and the next step is make that group even a little larger still. We need some additional membership from particularly some representation from our PSE and NMEA members, but beyond the counselors. The counselors, of course, are NMEA members, but we want some classroom teacher representatives. But we looked at all the goals we've had and all the different initiatives and efforts we have in the district, and we had pages that filled that wall and that wall with all of the things that are going on, and tried to organize those and think about, what are they all saying to us, and what is it that we're really trying to do? So there's really three strands that we're working on. Ensuring effectiveness for teachers and the ability for teachers to be effective in the classroom, strengthening our instructional program based on student needs, and ensuring that we have established a safe and supportive school environment, addressing school safety, discipline, and other non-academic factors that impact the student experience in North Mason schools. So as we started aligning all of, started aligning all of the initiatives under those things, we came up with the concept that there are really three things that we're trying to grow, and those are the whole child, the whole school, and the whole community. And all of the many initiatives, the activities, the materials, the things that we're asking people to do every day can be categorized under the ideas in this chart. So academic engagement, an effective learning culture, how do we educate and engage the community, behavior supports, effective systems for learning, communication and awareness with our community, and social, emotional supports, wellness throughout the school, not just kiddos. Lots of people need to focus on their wellness, including those of us who are working in the schools, and then engaging our community and getting them involved in helping us build these successful learning environments for our kids. So this is where we're going. And the reason that we're focusing on social, well, there's a lot of reasons. We're focusing on social, emotional learning, and most obviously because of the need identified by our staffs, particularly over the last few years. But as they started to look at the data, it's really important to notice that there's really good science that links social, emotional learning to student success. There's a number of, this is data from a meta-study. So there's a number of studies, but basically there's an 11 percentile point gain on standardized achievement tests when we're addressing social, emotional learning directly in the classroom for kids. So, and then the reduced risk of failure, the reduced risk of behavior and acting out and all of those things. So that's why it's so important for us to really pay attention to this and to build our multi-tiered systems of support. And we have some of that in place, mostly in the academic sphere, so that's why, sphere, that's really why we're emphasizing building social, emotional learning and building behavior supports right now first. And the idea behind all of this is, right now, we have some really good things going on, but really, especially when we come to behavior and social, emotional learning, we're addressing that first tier of the pyramid, the 80% who aren't struggling in those areas every day. We don't have the pieces or the puzzle pieces necessarily in place that we need for the next two groups, for the 15% that need a little more support, and for the 5% that have really severe needs that need to be really targeted. So that's the work that this group has been engaged in all year, that we're going to continue to build with the input and support of the rest of our staff. And that's what Beth is going to come talk to you about in June, and that's what she and Dr. Greg Benner, and some of our central office staff, Dr. Benner from the University of Washington, has been supporting us in this work. And they're going to share that during collaboration times on Monday at each of our buildings. So that's what I've got on that report.
Who is the person from the University of Washington?
Dr. Greg Benner. And yeah, she's from the UW. He's been doing a lot of work with districts throughout the state, most notably some very successful work in Tacoma recently.
All right.
All right, is, let's see, is that the end of your report? Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Moving on to community linkage planning and message of the month. Comicker requests that we get some of those meetings I was talking about, those other councils and stuff, dates readily available for us.
Yeah, we'll look them up and put them in the linkage list.
Thank you so much. Anyone else have anything for community linkage?
Oh, I do have a, go ahead, John. I just wrote one.
You just wrote a letter, yes. I'm editing it.
And then I'm up for the next one as well?
Uh-uh.
Oh.
That's the one you just wrote. You were a little ahead.
I thought I was late.
No.
Well, how interesting.
I would like, if you guys are supportive of it, sending some recognition letters out to those agencies who participated in The Last Dance, the drunk mock car crash out there. It was well done. Some agencies had to pick up the slack of others. And so write a couple of letters out, appreciating those, and maybe some, hopefully, hey, can we get some further help in the future for another one. So I was really, I didn't get to see it, but I heard a lot of good things about it, so.
So great idea.
I did see it. It was great, great. I thought so anyway.
Good. All right, upcoming board letters, we already established. Sean's got his letters in, so good job. And July, there'll be no article, and then August, Leanna, you'll, got that one?
Oh, I'm going to bust it out, yeah.
We'll work on it.
All right. So next is assurance of organizational performance and policy review. And if policy review, first one would be ER 11, district calendar.
This is just a discussion, because we talked about this last month.
Yes.
I don't have anything further.
Okay.
No, me neither.
You good?
Nope, didn't have any.
Okay. So the next one then is proposed revised governance policies, and this was GP 2, GP 8, and then Board Superintendent Leadership 5. So it was after attending the Wasdell Policy Governance Networking Summit. These were kind of recommended for minor decisions.
Yes. So there are just some, some little minor changes to each of those.
Well, I read those changes, and I agree. Do we need a, do we need a motion to approve?
I do need, I do need following that, though. Probably a class, just a refresher on the public meetings stuff, just so I make compliance as well.
Yes, you do need a class. So we will make sure to get you signed up.
All right.
Do you have like a tickler for all of us? Like, do we need, I mean, I pay attention to mine. Like, I've got, I think, a year and a half left, but it's every four years.
Well, I just, every year at the Wasdell Conference, they provide the training, so that's the best time to get the in-person training, and then you can go to the state auditor's website and do the online training until then, and that's considered adequate. But I think that really would be important to do that training at the fall conference, Mr. Patty.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, let's see. So this is just the proposal, there's no...
You could make a motion to accept the changes.
But if you guys wanted to make those corrections or changes to the...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make the changes in GP 2, 8, and BSR 5 that we discussed.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we are in the adjournment section. Just once again, as a reminder, we will be, after we make these last comments, we'll be going into executive session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation. That's expected to last, it says here 30 minutes, but I suspect it'll go about 45 actually. So, but for now, announcements, comments, public. Dr. LePere?
I have a question on the stadium. We will be playing our home game, do you...
Yes, everything will be fine. There just will be no roof to keep you dry if it rains until after the fall season.
I just, we will be playing, so that's the key thing.
Yeah. We'll have our new locker rooms and your concession stand, and everything else except a roof.
That's right.
The roof will have to wait till after the season now.
The players can be wet, we can all get wet.
That's right.
Anybody else? Okay. Any comments from my colleagues on the board here?
I did forget to mention that I attended the car crash exercise, and I was privileged to actually stand with the press near Dana Kampa, and it was wonderful to see her do her job, and I had my cameras taking various pictures. I was just impressed with the cooperation among the various agencies that took place, and obviously the student cooperation as well. I thought it was a sobering experience, very dramatic, including the arrest of the student that had been responsible. It was very, it was, all this was announced over the loudspeakers, and I thought it was a very dramatic and sobering event this year as it was in the past.
Laura, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
You are?
I'm good.
All right.
One thing, reminder to board members, that Monday is the award ceremony. So I hope you all, I hope to see you all there, because I will certainly be there. Culmination of a whole lot of work for scholarships for everybody in the community, but also then I wanted to thank not just you teachers here, but teachers for the whole district. You know, I'm a treasurer for the North Mason Scholarship Foundation, and I'm the one that receives the money that you teachers donate for scholarships, and it's about $4,000 in this year. So thank you, not just you personal teachers out there who've done that, but all the teachers who have been donating for that. Thank you. That's hardly ever reported. I know that you give it to United Way, and you do sorts of other stuff, and we get reports about that, but we always seem to forget to bring that one up. But we're getting, you know, $4,000 from you teachers that goes right into the kids' scholarships. Thank you.
Do we need, do we need to do a head count right now, because it's Thursday, and by Monday for her to put a thing out?
You're allowed to go to those kinds of events, as long as you don't do any business.
I just want to make sure that we were...
You can't talk to each other about anything related to the board or the district while you're there.
I did have one comment. I think in the spirit of my colleague's observation, Spencer, our student representative, is active in the community beyond school events, and I was very pleased to be able to attend a cancer-fighting event that he helped organize and was held at the Victor Community Center. It was well-attended. I don't know, like, it's... I don't know exactly how much they raised. Spencer would probably know more about that. But I was very pleased to see our man at the governance table taking seriously the good of his community beyond just school events. And I thought it did North Mason proud for him to be there in a leadership role, gathering people together, getting them to focus on a common end. So, I just think he deserves some credit for that.
Good job, Spencer. Do you have any comments?
I did, I just want to mention another thing that, um, happened in the last month. I got to attend, uh, a safety event down at Grace Harbor Community College with, um, our various fire district representatives. Grace Harbor did a live, live shooter drill with, um, makeup and blank weapons, you know, making the noise, but nothing coming out and, and everybody responding. And, um, it was very valuable to not be in the midst of even something like we've had here, but be able to stand on the sides and watch the decisions and think about, okay, like we do when we're doing classroom walkthroughs, what can I learn about what my friend is doing in the classroom? What can I learn about what they're doing or not doing in response to this event to bring back here? And so, we have a partnership with our first responders to plan and make sure we're building more effective responses in case things happen. Um, and so that was really, really valuable and I appreciate getting to do that on behalf of the district, so.
Spencer, you got any last closing remarks? Okay. So, Leanna, you have the self-assessment.
Here we go. All right. All right, I read through these. Instead of checking off each one after I do it, I read through them. And, uh, unless we are not satisfactory, and then I mark it satisfactory. Uh, the agenda was well-planned to focus on the real work of the board. The board followed its agenda and did not allow itself to get sidetracked. Board members prepared for and contributed to the meeting. The meeting proceeded without interruptions or distractions. The board's deliberations and decision-making processes were public. Participation was balanced, all participated, no one dominated. Members listened attentively, avoiding side conversations. Work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness and meeting participants treated each other with respect and courtesy. And I called those satisfactory. And the next, uh, governance principles review. Board action occurs at the policy level rather than the operational level. The board reviews policy about each topic before discussing that issue. Um, I'm, both of those are satisfactory. And the next one, in writing additional policies, the board starts with a broad statement and becomes more detailed in a logical and disciplined sequence. We did not, uh, do a new one, so we NA'd that one. The board minimizes time spent monitoring past performance. The board routinely dedicates time to reviewing, improving its own process. The board clarifies priorities and values when considering potential outcomes, beneficiaries and costs of outcomes. The board follows an annual calendar based on a plan for doing its work. And the board chair helps the board efficiently conduct its meeting. And I was noticing today that you're, you're doing a really good job. In the very beginning, you were doing a good job, but you were still asking questions and what, but you've really taken, taken a handle on that. And, uh, the board spends most of its time deliberating issues, defining and clarifying its vision and linking with its community as opposed to fixing things. And the board supports the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of its policies. And I put yes, other than the one NA on number three for all those. And we are overall satisfactory.
Great, all right. So, now we'll go to our executive session. Oh, yeah, and the next meeting date will be held, uh, June 21st, 2018, 6:30 PM, right in this room. So.